It's like that first one.
Wow, it's aggressive.
Get better at that.
Get that anger out.
The City of Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, February 16, 2023, at 7:00 PM. And can we have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? You know, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Brayson.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Hillfrank.
Yep.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Rorick.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Vannebosh.
Here.
Intercity manager Heslop. Okay, and now item four, to approve the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, including items eight E and the amendment that includes Mike Itrich's retirement letter, Shannon Adams' resignation letter? That is under the consent agenda, and 10 E, follow-up operations on office staffing and functions discussion under unfinished business? And are we removing 15 A?
Yes.
Okay, and the removal of 15 A, which was closed session for UHY status.
May I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the removal of 15 A, but also with the removal of items eight E and F from the consent agenda?
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support approving the agenda, removing 15 A and items eight E and eight F out of the consent agenda.
They go to 12 then.
Okay.
Yes, we move to 12 A and B.
Okay, a motion and support and any discussion?
Is there a, can we comment on hearing something from UHY at the next meeting or?
You will, Mike, there's, I mean, why don't I talk to you after the meeting and give you an update?
Fair enough, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Under item five, communications, we have the letter from Laura Merchant and the East China Master Plan Letter. And can I have a motion to receive and file the letters from Laura Merchant and East China Township?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? All in fa-
I was just gonna say, with regards to the master plan letter, would we kick that to the planning commission, or is that something that we would take on ourselves?
I believe we've seen them before in the past, usually they send them to us, too, so that we can look at it.
Sure, I mean, it makes sense that neighboring communities would wanna
Yep.
at least be privy to each other's master plans, but just wondering if there was any formal protocol that we needed to go to, go through in order to make sure that happened. It seems like just kind of a courtesy letter, which is very nice, I appreciate it. It's required.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Around a public comment, anyone who's welcome to address the city commission, please state your name, limit your comments to five minutes, and the commission will not respond, but will follow up as necessary.
Hi, Cheryl Verkaman. Mike Hillfrank. We all know that you promote transparency. We all know that you are an expert on what is and what is not a public record that can be disclosed to the public. We all know that you are an expert on social media. We all know that you believe the public should have confidence in their representatives on this board. Rumor has it that on Saturday, February 11, 2023, this past weekend, you were arrested for alleged domestic violence, assault, and battery. The allegations relate to your actions with respect to your own minor daughter. I am asking that you voluntarily post on social media all of the records relating to the arrest, including all police reports and all videos. It is important that transparency to the public, and we all need access to this information. If you do not voluntarily post the information on your famous social media platform, I am sure some other member of the public will access the records and make them available to the public at large and to your fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Patricia May. I've never attended a meeting, full transparency, but I have put my name in to be considered to be a part of the committee when it comes to interviewing the city manager. My reason for that is I've had the opportunity to watch some of the content of the meetings, and I've never really attended meetings that were so adversarial. And, well, first, I'm 51 years old. I work as a medical first responder. I've been in a leadership role since about 1998. I'm not a politician, I have no qualms or dreams of becoming a politician, I'm just a normal, everyday person. However, I do have a lot of experience with hiring people, I think that I'm a good judge of character. I think what I offer that maybe others don't is I have not really attended these meetings. And in my opinion, they seem more of attacks towards one another. The public comments, in my opinion, are out of control. It's about the city, and it's about how we move forward, and it's about progress. It's not about name-calling or looking at people, asking people to post stuff, that's ridiculous. I want the city to move forward, I want the city to be productive, I want the city to continue to grow. I do not want to be a part, and I probably won't come back to a meeting, if they continue to be attacks on each other, it's ridiculous. My children are more mature than what I witnessed when I watched these videos. So, if that is something that I can offer this committee, that I can offer the city, I would love to be a part of it. If I'm not what you're looking for, I'm okay with that, too. Either way, I love living in Marine City, I love the people of Marine City, I love the growth of Marine City, I just think that in this room, with these adults, everybody needs to act like adults, and be here for what we're supposed to be here for, and make Marine City a great place to be. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Um, I just, Madam Mayor and city commissioners, I just wanted to start by saying, I don't come to these meetings to cause trouble, I really don't. I said, I come because I care and I love our town, and I said, and really, the only reason I think I wanted to follow up tonight is just that the questions that we talked about last week, mainly for me, it's about knowing what the vision is, what are the goals that you guys all have for our city? Because I didn't, there was no, like, open forum before elections happened, so I would love to know where you stand in going forward. I mean, myself and so many others spend so much time, our personal time, working on boards and committees in town, and it's because we care, we love where we live, and we want to see our city continue to thrive. So I would just ask that, and Shannon filled me in on how to do it, but maybe follow up with a couple of questions that we'd asked before, because we would really just like to get answers on that, and if we could do that at a future meeting, that would be, that would be great, I appreciate it, thanks.
Heather Warner, 345 North Elizabeth. I am just here because I'm not gonna come and try to pack into this room on the 20th for the whole marijuana conversation, but I do have something to say more to the residents than to the commission. Whether you feel one way or the other about it, Pandora's box is opened, and something needs to be done about it either way. So, just like PA 33, whether you want it or you don't want it, go out there, do your diligence, get the proper paperwork from the state of Michigan, get your wording, go get your signatures, get your proper percentage of property owners that you need, and put it on the ballot. We can sit and have town hall meetings all day long, and everybody can argue back and forth, but if you really want to do something, do it. I did it for PA 33 with my team, we got it on the ballot after they voted it in, and the city vote, you know, you guys got to go out and vote and voted it down. So instead of the bickering back and forth that I've watched at the last couple of meetings and witnessed it, go out and do something about it. It's a, it's a long tedious process knocking on doors and getting signatures, but it can be done, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I think most of the people know me by now, but I'll just go briefly over a little bit of my background, 35, 40 years in law enforcement, retired police chief from Shelby Township. I'm also retired Navy, I did five years active duty in Vietnam, I was a substance abuse counselor with the Navy and did work with PTSD. I want to speak again on the marijuana issue. I'm here all about the kids. I, you know, I don't, all the political stuff that goes on, that's part of the political process, as a lady mentioned. People want to put it on the ballot, put it on the ballot, we'll rally the troops and we'll get them out there and we'll let the people decide, I'm not opposed to that, but what I want to speak to the commission tonight is, two years ago, you passed an ordinance, and I'd like to see you, somebody bring up a motion in this meeting and the next one to support that ordinance, so that we know where you guys stand politically on this marijuana pot shop, candy shop, whatever you want to call it, marijuana dispensary. Again, I work full-time in a large school district in Macomb County security, I worked as a dare officer, I've been involved with schools, I worked for the sheriff's office for six years after my retirement in 2014, working in the schools. The biggest issue with the marijuana is the edibles, there's no way around it. They can bring them into school, the little kids get them, everybody gets them, I realize that we live in a world, I was a narcotics detective, yes, drugs are around, people are gonna get it, but you're gonna put a can, pot candy store on Parker, Water Street, wherever it happens to be, to advertise to every Cardinal Mooney kid or Marine City High School kid that drives into town, or kids who go around and say, and point at and say, hey, there's the marijuana bake shop, the candy shop, we're advertising as adults and as our city to our kids to say, hey, it's okay. Yeah, granted, it's for adults. The other thing, law enforcement, I'm a strong supporter of the chief in the police department, we have the best police department we ever had here, and I've been here 35 years. However, as law enforcement, he can't babysit a pot shop, stuff goes out the back door, the front door, minors' sales, sales to young adults who give it to minors, all those kinds of things, the chief doesn't have the manpower and time to be babysitting a pot candy shop, bake shop in our town, and we need to, the board needs to consider that. Now, the money, everybody here probably knows we got some problems with the roads, and we hear some commissioner talk about the roads and money, and the money we're gonna get, maybe we might get $25,000, $35,000 out of this. I'm sure the DPW director can tell you how many yards of road that's gonna pave, not much at all. So this argument that we, the city needs the money, and we're gonna pave all these roads with this pot money is absolutely patent ridiculous, and I don't know why it keeps coming up. I've spent my time off, I work 40 hours a week now, talking to almost every pastor in town, almost all the principals at the school that I know and some I don't know, meetings I go to in Macomb County, sheriff's deputies, chiefs of police I've met over the last few months, they're all say it's ridiculous, that little Marine City wants to open up a pot shop. Algenack, St. Clair, Marysville, they're standing strong, we're gonna be the pot shop on the river, we're gonna be the town that's gonna have pot on the river, we need to be the town that's known for theaters and restaurants and our beaches and tourists coming, but we're gonna have a pot shop in our town? Ridiculous. Marijuana is a gateway drug, people can say whatever they want, it's legal in Michigan, people voted, they want to smoke it, adults want to smoke it, that's fine, it's a huge gateway drug for kids. Nine years in narcotics and working in the schools and working in substance abuse in the Navy, almost all of them, they start with marijuana in high school, they move on to harder drugs. 80,000 fentanyl deaths, a lot of those deaths started from kids smoking marijuana. So you want to have a candy pot shop in town? Think about the first title or it ends in the ER up in River District, think about the kids that are smoking and eating edibles in their break time at lunch at the high school that aren't progressing, and all those things, for what? A little bit of money that we might get in town? Now, on the other front, you want to take on the legal community and you want to authorize licenses in this town, and you want to end up like Port Huron in litigation, and have your city attorney spending all kinds of money in court, arguing over who gets a license, who doesn't get a license, what ordinance, is it this far or that far? I mean, doesn't make any sense to me. I want you all to be politically accountable, I'd like to see a vote in the next couple of meetings to hold you politically accountable about what we're gonna do about protecting our kids. The kids are vulnerable, they're the most vulnerable people in our community, and it's your obligation to protect them, thank you so much.
We end at item seven, approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion on these, I'd like to send them back so that we could get a little bit better information on the audit. It looks like it was pretty cut short, and there was a lot of really good information in there, so I'd kind of like to see a little bit more information put in there, because it was a big discussion. The rest of it, I guess I don't have a problem with, but I also like, if we could put a watermark on here for draft in the future, so that, and in fact, we should do this for all our minutes, until they do get approved here, they should all say draft on them, but I'd like to just send it back, just for that portion, so that we could get the proper documentation of that audit from last meeting.
Was that a motion?
Yep.
Support.
Is that a motion to not approve the minutes?
Well, I don't know if, you want me to approve something before I can read it?
No, I mean, the, under the Open Meetings Act, the minutes come in draft, then they come to the next meeting, you either vote to approve them
All right.
or not to approve them.
So how can I get it updated and approved at the same time?
You could approve them subject to the audit part being modified and brought back, or you could not approve them until they're in a form that you like.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, so we have to act on the minutes.
Okay, all right, okay. Then I'll change, I'll revise my motion to not approve these minutes until we can get the audit portion updated and then brought back, is that okay?
Yeah, and I will support the revised motion.
Great, so a motion and a support and discussion? What, not in great detail, but what was missing on the audit part that you?
There's a lot, I mean, we had some good questions, some good information that Mr. McBride gave, and there's just, I mean, there's more information from people that gave, talked at public comment than we had on our audit. So, because these are so important, I would just like to see more put in there because of the nature of that audit this particular.
So what would be the guidance for the clerk, then? I mean, as far as the particulars, though, I'm just, like, what specific things, I don't want to get-
Well, I'd like some of the questions in there, some of his answers in there, a little bit more detail on some of the issues that we had with there. I could probably come up with some more issues, and I guess I could send that to her for update, but I just think it was, it's pretty weak.
Like issues outside of what we're discussing in the meeting, or issues that we're discussing in the meeting?
Issues that we're discussing in the meeting, yeah.
There's only like a half a page for the whole audit, and it's an important, historical-
There's not much here.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I just want it to be documented properly, that's all I'm asking, it's just a little bit more documentation, and if I need to, I can always send her some, some points out of there that I think are important to put in there, if you'd prefer. It's not a problem.
I mean, any reason why it didn't happen already? I mean, just, we've had the minutes to review.
I always like to do my business in public.
Any more discussion?
I'd like to speak if I could. So I copied the format used by the previous clerk for the minutes in regards to the audit, and there is a policy in place in regards to how the minutes are conducted and how the minutes are done. The policy that was voted on back in November of 2021 states that the minutes are done from the clerk's perspective. And if there are additional edits or changes, they're supposed to be submitted to me in writing within, I believe it's eight days, I don't have the policy in front of me. Yes, it's supposed to be submitted in writing, so if anybody wants anything specific added to the minutes, they are submitted in writing in eight days, and it's attached to the minutes as an attachment. That's the policy that was voted on and approved by this commission back in November of 2021.
Okay, copying a format from a former one, this audit was totally different than our prior audit.
I captured the same information that was captured in the previous audit minutes.
I guess what she's trying to say is that we had a bad audit, so she wants that documented, because it's not the same as-
The previous one was a bad audit, too.
It wasn't like this audit at all.
But, so there's-
The prior one-
There's additional information, the proper procedure, based on what this commission voted on, is that if anybody wants their specific things added to the minutes, they get added as an attachment. And that's what was voted on in November of 2021.
You said this is from your perspective?
That's exactly what the policy and the procedure that was put in place in November 21 says, is that the minutes are taken and done from the clerk's perspective, from the clerk's interpretation.
Can you expand what that perspective was when you wrote a half a page on a public comment and listed every single question that the person said at the podium?
I'm permitted to do the minutes from my perspective and interpretation, the person asked several questions that requested a follow-up, so they were captured, so that this-
Can I speak for a minute?
Yeah.
So I've got an attorney-client communication from the city attorney dated October 12 of 2021 that has nine points to it, and I don't know if everybody has this, I can make sure you get it, but what the clerk is saying is, I mean, she is accurate according to the policy laid out, drafted and voted on on October 12 of 2021, and I will make sure I get this, if there's updates or something that needs to be done to this policy, I think it behooves this, this board maybe to revisit that and change the policy.
Okay, well, maybe that's something, I gotta believe that the new members wouldn't have had that, since that's-
I 100% agree with you.
So maybe that's something we could put on the next agenda for discussion, then, because we need to make sure we get the information out properly.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's on there.
I think, just, I think what the policy was, was a blend, was when you get the draft minutes, we created an extra step where you had a right, upon your review of the draft minutes, to attach your thoughts to the way the minutes ought to read and submit them.
Okay, I'll tell you, the way I interpreted that when we had it, when we spoke at the meeting and we wanted that in the minutes, we had to provide a copy of it, not this. It was if we-
I see what you're saying, I see.
It was if we wanted, if we wanted to make a statement, and then we wanted that in there-
I want that in the minute.
Then I would hand, which I've done before, and I would-
That's still part of the policy as well.
I'm not gonna continue getting beat up about this in public. Have a good night, thank you.
Was that a resignation, like today?
But it is a policy, right? It's not a law or an ordinance or-
Well, it is, it is derived on the-
Hold on for a minute.
Okay, we gotta-
I think we need to address now the fact that we have no clerk.
Yeah, we need to stop right now.
All right, why don't we, why don't you Commissioners vote to recess for 10 minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to recess for 10 minutes.
Support.
Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, recess.
Mr. Moran, we're gonna swear you in as clerk.
Well, our, probably the three least qualified males in the room down here are gonna try to do the minutes, the billing official will actually be writing them, I'll be listening, Jim will be listening, we'll convene tomorrow with the YouTube video, and we'll get the minutes done.
Yeah, that's fine.
Be gentle with me.
Because the clerk is-
All right.
Do we need to re-convene?
Is not coming back.
Do we have to reconvene?
Yeah, motion to go back into open session?
Make a motion to go back to open session?
Did we give it a full 10 minutes? I mean, just-
Oh, okay.
We're in this motion right here, approve the minutes.
Yeah, we should wait to full 10.
I mean, if-
Okay.
Somebody may have left.
We gotta go back, we have to go back to this one.
Don't necessarily know that anybody did.
They vote to go back in the session. You're gonna have to get another one here.
What minute are we on, Brian?
I don't know.
I think we're in minute five, maybe.
This is two.
I thought I looked down at 1925 at one point.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Tracy.
Who, can I ask you a question, who motioned and then seconded the-
I made the motion, oh, I made the motion to take the break.
I believe I seconded.
Yes.
I think we're solid now, if you guys want to get started.
Then throw that one over there.
All right, I'll make a motion that we go back into open session at-
Never.
7:30.
Motion to go into open at 7:30.
I think it needs to be that we end our recess, right?
Motion back at 7:30.
I don't know.
Just go back into open session.
Okay, support.
We have a motion to go back in open session and support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What was, what was that noise?
Uh-oh, the horn.
No noise, okay.
All right.
All right.
So, now we have to vote on this?
Yeah, we're still on 78.
So my personal opinion is, is the minute should stand as is, the request violates our procedure, and honestly, the audit really speaks for itself, so.
Well, I just read the procedure there, and it really doesn't say that in the procedure.
Well, it, what it says is that, at this meeting, if you have corrections to the minutes-
Yes.
-you're supposed to bring them to this meeting and articulate them.
All right.
Word for word, that's what it says. It says, and the body shall make any correction to the minutes, you know, you're supposed to bring them, you can't just say, go take another shot at it. You gotta come, and we don't have to, I'm just saying for, because we're gonna visit this issue next meeting, apparently, but really, if you have a problem with the minutes, you really should come to the next meeting with an articulated version of how you want it to read.
Okay, because originally-
So that your fellow Commissioners can say, yeah, that makes sense.
But originally, I know when we made that, it was at the meeting, if we wanted it in there, we had-
I agree with that.
-their statement, and we had to turn it in, that's how it was supposed to-
I agree with that part of the policy as well. This part of the policy is, is if you have corrections to the minutes, you're supposed to make them tonight.
Well, it doesn't say what detail, though, does it?
Corrections, the body-
It doesn't really say specifically what I gotta-
All right.
So we gotta work on it, right?
Right, so in the, you know, that'll probably be something we should work on, that says, if, you know, bring, bring your, bring your version of the language to the meeting.
We need clarity on the-
Right.
On those-
So for now, the motion is, is to just, but a correction is a correction, a correction is not, go try again.
Well, but our minutes are supposed to reflect what happens at the meeting, right?
Right, and there were questions about the audit, the questions were answered, and-
But nothing was reflected in there. You don't think that's important? I mean, I do, these minutes are history.
So, but we gotta talk about minutes versus transcription.
Very true.
Because that's- Because that's, okay, so we have a motion and we have a support, is there any new discussion? And again, the motion is to not approve the minutes.
And to get that updated, so I, I guess, can I do that or can't I? Sounds like you're saying no based on what you think with that.
The public body shall make any corrections to the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting that the minutes refer to.
But it doesn't say anything more than.
I'm, I'm just reading you what.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, it's, it's lacking.
Roll call, is this gonna be a roll call?
Yeah.
All right, so I have to do an all in favor vote, but you're just talking about roll call down there? It's a roll call or no?
We have no idea.
Okay.
If your sheet says all in favor, we'll take.
Well, it was all in favor about approving it, so we still go with that?
Um, sure.
All in favor of not approving the minutes as the motion stated? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So how many?
Yeah, it's pretty hard to tell, I don't.
How many? It was what?
Bill was a no.
So it failed.
It fails.
Right, I, I didn't hear, I, I heard a, a deep voice, but I didn't know if it was.
All right.
So the motion to not approve fails, do we do a motion to approve?
Yep.
Can I have a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of February 2nd?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion and a support, any discussion on that?
I mean, again, if we wanted the correction, my understanding was it had to be specific stated at the meeting and presented. If you wanted more detail added to the audit portion, that's fine. It is available on video, it's available for anybody to see. I feel there was a little posturing during that, if I'm so bold as to say so myself, but especially when, you know, I'd spoken to the auditor, received all the feedback, even have some information to share about the training I just received and questions I asked in that, and received some specific feedback on how people can react to audits. But yes, I feel that these minutes were perhaps not as detailed as some might have wanted in the audit portion, but that they fairly represented the results of the audit. That's it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait now.
Can we have who opposed? I'll have to circle who, who did I.
All right.
Maybe we just need to do it.
Did you oppose?
Four to three.
No, I just want to move on.
Yes, four to three, they're approved.
Yep. So it's five to two.
Five to two.
Five to two.
Five to two.
Okay.
Hillfrank.
Okay. Lisa and Rita.
Yep, we got.
Can I have a motion to approve the city commission closed session meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2023?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion?
Can't really discuss closed.
That's true. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's, under consent agenda, we have the.
Seconding that motion.
Who seconded the consent agenda?
Not, uh, the full session, was it you?
I'm, I made a motion in the approval of the agenda to move two items from the consent.
Just now though.
Just now with the full session.
Who seconded seven B?
It was me, sorry.
Ross?
Ross.
Ross.
Thank you. This is my bad ear.
For the consent agenda, I have A, the Marine City Fire Authority run report, B, the departmental activity monthly reports, the pension board minutes of October 25th, 2022, and the pension retiree healthcare minutes of October 25th, 2022. And then we had removed eight E and F out of the consent agenda. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with the removal of items eight E and eight F into twelve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, letters A through D.
Support.
Have a motion and a support, any discussion?
Bill supported it.
Thank you.
Jacob and Clausen.
Without any discussion, roll call vote, please.
Bryson. Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hillfrank?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorig?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then next, you start that one.
Under financial business, item A expenditures including payroll in the amount of three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and four cents. And I have a motion to approve expenditures including payroll in the motion, they're in the amount of three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and four cents.
Make a motion, we approve expenditures including payroll for three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and four cents.
Support.
Motion and a support, any new discussion?
Commissioner Hendricks? He's gone discussion, right?
No, no discussion, we can go ahead.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Hendricks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hillfrank?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorig?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner, Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Okay, Bryson made the motion, so.
You still gotta ask him.
Yeah, you still gotta ask. Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes, well done.
Under B for preliminary financial statements, can I have a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements?
So moved.
Support.
I have motion and support, any discussion?
Bryson and, Bill and I said at the same time, give it to Bill for support.
Bryson and Bill.
Bryson.
Ross. No roll, no roll.
No roll call vote.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
All right, for the budget amendments, we have resolution 004, 2023.
This is fast.
Can I have a motion to approve and adopt resolution 004, 2023 to amend the budget for the 2022, 23 fiscal year as presented?
Move that, move that stated.
Support.
I have motion and a support, discussion?
I'm glad to see that we, we got some, I guess, I gotta point out that the audit cost us around seventy, seventy thousand dollars and we only budgeted twenty-four.
Hey, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorig?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh, oh, sorry, Mayor Vanabosh, my apologies.
No worries, yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
And Commissioner Hillfrank?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under unfinished business, in the city manager committee, resident appointment, it's 10A. Well, I would like to thank everybody who applied for the resident appointment.
I said for sure.
Lot of familiar names, and then we've had some, some names that haven't been as familiar into some of the other committees and commissions that we've had. And I thought that was very encouraging that we had some, some new names come in as well. Based on the feedback and conversations that I've had with people, I would like a motion to appoint Patricia May to the city manager search committee, can I get a second?
Support.
I have my motion and a support, any discussion?
Nope, but I appreciate your speech, that was very good.
Very helpful.
You have all the applicants, I mean, you have the most management support, you've worked the most with people in the present, in this specific work environment, which is very different from it was two, where it was two years ago. I think that's very poignant and if approved, I'd really appreciate your support.
With no other discussion, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rorig?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yep.
Commissioner Hillfrig?
Yeah.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll just put the committee.
10B for city manager committee scheduling the first meeting. So reads it, I'm supposed to get a motion to schedule the first meeting of the city manager search committee for, but I'd like to open it up for discussion prior to that. I'm not on the committee, I can't speak for everyone's schedules and what works. Give discussion and a motion for the week, next week, the week of February 20th is, if committees available to meet?
I guess my question is, is the committee gonna meet when you finally get resumes? Or what are they gonna do before that?
So, yeah, I mean, that is a good question. I, I don't necessarily see the harm in meeting first, you know, maybe giving to the people who may be seeking the resumes, you know, kind of an outline of what we would like to see, if that would be a healthy thing to do.
In deciding the search parameters, like where you're gonna advertise, what you're gonna do, where you're gonna go out with that.
Are we gonna use MML, are we gonna use this, are we gonna use that, you know? So yeah, I think that would be a very healthy thing to do, and I was just looking at my next week. It's not great, but.
I guess I have a question for the, the city attorney, because I had heard that this committee should be meeting in open and therefore subject to the OMA, in which case that might throw a tizzy into meeting minutes and such, or can this just be a committee that doesn't need to meet in?
Well, we need a clerk, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna meet, we're gonna meet in accordance with the OMA, we're gonna post the meeting, we're gonna, public's gonna be available. We'll, we'll work out the minute situation. I think the first meeting is organizational, as Brian was saying, we should set some follow-up timelines. How are we gonna get resumes, what search engines are we gonna use? What parameters are we gonna look at? Perhaps hear from the police chief as to what entity he can provide us with, who will be doing background checks? What level of background check we will, we will be using and implementing? And, and set all those parameters and then report back to this commission the results of our first meeting.
Agreed, that's effectively what I was hoping for. Trish, do you have any? Wednesday is good for me.
I'm a little tight on Wednesday, can we do Thursday?
Is that our resident?
Yes. Third.
Twenty-third.
10A. Yeah, but what's her name? Patricia May.
I think I'm good on Thursday. What time on Thursday?
Missed that part.
Four thirty or five or, you have any? Five? You want later? Okay.
Twenty-third at five.
You're gonna do five thirty just in case? Does that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm good, Brian.
Is, do we have confirmed that this room isn't booked or anything or?
Well, if it isn't, we can convene in a, in a different room.
Yeah. I have everything. But at 260 South Parker.
Right, yes, keep the address.
At least it's here, yeah, okay.
Let's make sure the meeting is posted at least eighteen hours in advance or as soon as we can.
Yeah, 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 I mean, it, you know, as soon as these minutes come out or the video even goes live, right?
Right.
But agreed, it should be posted on the website or somewhere.
Okay.
And again, like you mentioned, organizational and procedural, right, that's what we want to establish.
Then can I get the motion to schedule the first meeting of the city manager search committee for February 23rd at five thirty?
So moved.
Support.
Clausen.
Move and support, and I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Clausen.
It was Jake made the motion and Clausen seconded for your purposes down there. Apologies for interrupting.
No, no worries.
You're starting with Ross on this one. Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yep.
Commissioner Hillfrig?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorig?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seventeen thirty hour, February 23rd, right?
Mm-hmm, five thirty to, you know, five, six thirty-ish.
So for next item C, city manager committee define manager salary range. So for purposes of discussion, I need to set a motion to open. So can I get a motion to set the salary range for city manager? Let's say eighty thousand to one hundred and twenty thousand, just for purposes of opening discussion.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support and discussion.
I mean, I, I, I know I asked for this, for us to, to talk about this at our last meeting, I think you get what you pay for, I mean, that's the plain, simple truth of it. And it's a tough environment to find quality candidates right now. If you want to entice someone, we're gonna have to offer more, especially if you want to entice someone that may have to move. So I, I really think we need to up the city manager's salary. You know, I don't know if, you know, eighty to one hundred and twenty is there, eighty to a hundred, but I, I certainly think eighty would be the basement to start at.
And it would also be based on, on.
Experience.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, let's face it, St. Clair just hired there, is at the very upper end of that. That's confirmed in a news article. So, you know, there's precedence in the area.
Okay.
Yep.
What was the previous salary?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-three.
Well, she started at seventy-three and then it jumped to seventy-five.
Went from seventy-two to seventy-five.
So I have a motion, support, we've had discussion. Roll call vote, please?
Excuse me, we're doing eighty to one hundred and twenty?
Bryson made the motion. Yeah, that's what we made motion on, she, yeah.
Who made the motion?
Eighty to one twenty.
Yes.
I just wanted to.
Yes.
Based on experience.
Based on experience.
Bryson made the motion, I seconded.
Lisa seconded it.
Roll call vote.
One twenty start.
Right, that's with, that's where they're at, there was a car allowance, there was all this stuff.
Yeah.
Well, but you also negotiate a lot of that stuff too, sometimes after the fact.
Correct.
This is just a starting point.
Yeah, the, the research that I've done, I just saw the city of La Pira is also hiring a city manager for, I think their starting rate was a hundred and twenty. Ultimately, their nine thousand population, they're bigger than us, but in order to even draw somebody here, you're gonna have to offer money. I was, honestly, when I'm doing the budget now, I plugged eighty-eight thousand into the budget as a base just because I know you're gonna need to throw some money at this to get a, a good candidate to come here.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have this nice size, this range, because if you don't, you, you don't have it on the front end, you're not gonna draw people to even apply, they're just gonna look elsewhere, so.
I mean, back in the day, three city managers ago, they had a couple applicants from Louisiana and Oklahoma and part of the negotiating with them was some moving expenses, et cetera, so. You're, it's gonna be open to, I mean, I think hopefully the committee can meet and we can discuss maybe putting this nationwide, maybe to draw somebody here, and if negotiating a moving expense to get somebody here is worth it, then, you know, you guys can decide on that later, but on that later, but I like that range to start.
All right, was it roll call or?
Roll call, yeah.
Roll call vote. Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yep.
Commissioner Hilfrink.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Roig.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You're getting better at projecting.
Next, 10D, social district discussion. And I think we were gonna get an update from interim city manager on that.
So to make, make this issue a little easier on you, the update is in writing. What I did was, based on the law, I gave you a general social district checklist, which sequentially goes through the process that we would have to do in order to form our district. I'm working with your interim city manager on our common area map and our two qualified licensees. We're close to having that resolved. I went ahead and prepared the draft type of documents we're gonna need, and attached them to this with citations back to the requirements. So at the next meeting, this interim city manager and I will present to you a defined map, a social district, a common area, a prepared resolution for your, you know, first review and perhaps consideration and action. And then we're gonna have to prepare a management and maintenance plan, and we're gonna have to get with Mike. Oh, wow. Well, I'll talk to Mike about, you know, how I go about ordering or getting the right kind of signage that is required, ordered and in place. And then we have to, this could be an interesting project, if somebody knew somebody who's artistic, or we wanted to throw this out into the arena and maybe get some feedback, local high schools or art students, we're, we're gonna have to come up with our own logo. I'll email all of you ones, the one, we just amended the social district common area in the Village of Oxford on Tuesday night, because we've had tremendous success with our social district there. And we created a village logo that goes on the containers. Containers are regulated by size, and you have to have this logo on them that the establishments fund, you don't fund it, but coming up with a logo could be, could be, you know, some degree of, of interest to people who might wanna help out. So I'll send you some examples, and maybe at the next meeting, we can decide how we're gonna go about maybe soliciting ideas for our logo.
Is there a, an edict on the size of the sticker for logo?
No, there really isn't.
So the map idea could conceive of?
Yeah, there is, there is a, there is a restriction on the size of the container itself. The social district doesn't allow, like, you know, a twenty-four-ouncer. We're limited to a...
Forty?
Four, yeah. We're, we're limited to sixteen ounces, so I, I don't, what is, that's like, so the logo can be, can wrap around, or, you know, however you wanna do it.
Right.
It'd be something that, might be a fun project for somebody to work on.
But you'll have an example from Oxford, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Any requirements about the logo, anything that has, has to be included in it?
Just, it has to, it has to be on a container, the container has to be glass-free, not more than sixteen ounces. The logo has to be available to the social district permit holders via email or otherwise, so they can order the plastic cups with the logo on it. So we kinda define what the logo is, the rest is done by the licensees. They order their own, you know, they're allowed to still have their name, you know, but, but they have to have the logo on there, that it's a social district mug.
But a sticker would suffice. I mean, any, anything you need to do to?
Yeah. So anyways, that, that, that's kind of the funner part of the, maybe, of the project. Maybe we can enlist some local talent here to help us with the logo.
Do we have to include the logo on the signs? Would that be something we'd wanna do?
We could.
Sure. If we're gonna make one.
We could.
Mike, do you know of any sign backups? We talked about other stuff that could be a backup, in terms of ordering and availability? The signs are not, signs are not a supply chain issue at the moment, is what, okay. Okay, just checking.
And then we have to, we have to strategically place them, so people are aware of the...
The boundaries of the district.
Yeah. Okay. Anyways, read through your checklist when you get a chance, you don't have to do it now, and then we'll, we'll have the doc, you know, the, the example documents you see, we'll have them filled in for the next meeting.
You said you had a draft map?
No, I don't yet. The interim city manager is still sort of walking and seeing, so there's more, there's, you wanna draw the district, but you wanna define the common area, so when you walk out of establishment A, where, then now you have to be in the common area. So the, the establishment itself just has to be adjacent or somehow touching the district to be eligible, but when you step out of the, the establishment, you have to step out into the common area. So we need to define, one box would be the, the district, right? And then we have to make sure that we define the, the common area. What we were doing on Tuesday in another community was, we had a, we had a definition, and we had a common area, but there was like one small little park area that had been not part of the common area. So they amended to add that, so there was continuity of, of walking. So we're trying to look at the pedestrian flow, the natural flow, Jim's looking at, you know, where, where will people wanna walk when they leave a facility, a licensee facility?
So how, how is this gonna impact the, the buyers that currently have seating outside?
I, I can tell you this, you, you, you have to go inside licensee establishment to get the mug with the drink that allows you to then go into the common area and walk. You can't, it's not like you can just pull up into the outdoor area, say, you know, fill up my mug. So there are some requirements about having to go inside to get the, the beverage.
Okay, so the buyers that currently have seating outside?
Won't impact them.
It won't impact?
No, no.
I feel like some of those should be revisited, since, you know, a lot of them were given a lot of perks over the pandemic. I've had a lot of complaints from the neighbors, lights shining in their windows all night, horseshoes being played.
Oh, you mean the existing outdoor stuff?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know it's maybe something for another conversation, but...
Okay. Anyways, get familiar with the sequence laid out here, and Jim and I will hope, bring you the more details at the next meeting, we'll be moving forward on this.
Doesn't sound like it.
So this would be a motion to receive and file the general socia, general social district checklist document?
I'll make a motion that we receive and file the general social district checklist as provided by the city attorney.
Support.
Lisa. Lisa, Bill was a tie.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yep.
Commissioner Hilfrink.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Roig.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we're up, item E, the follow-up operations on office staffing and functions discussion. So, all right, I'll go ahead and start this one off then. Last week, I had a gentleman reach out to me by name of Scott Atkins. Scott has been watching our meetings. Scott, and he knows we're in an interim city manager situation. Scott just retired from city manager City Roseville from, after eleven years. Prior to that, he was the superintendent of St. Clair for about five years. Reached out to me very generically, said he knows what difficult, frustrating time it can be when you have an interim city manager, especially when you have one that's trying to run a department and do city manager duties, and said, let me know if you guys need anything, I'd be more than happy to help you out. So I had contacted city attorney, and just let him know that I had received that correspondence, and city attorney recommended that I obtain some more information, possibly on, on what he was alluding to with assistance. So I did respond to Mr. Atkins, as myself, just speaking with him. It became pretty obvious he had time, expertise, and knowledge that we could possibly utilize during this time of our interim city manager. He had skills throughout management, administrative, budget processes. I was very familiar with a long history of municipal management. He just started his own consulting company through his retirement from Roseville last month. He is current on best practices, listed in the MML. He has no want to be the city manager, he's retired out of that, and he just spoke as in a support or a consulting role. So I reached back out to Attorney Davis, told him what he had said, and then we in turn reached out to interim chief Heslop, told him what we had talked about, found, Attorney Davis and I had done some checking, and then interim chief Heslop did some checking on him, found it to be good information. I'll give you a few things on his bio and his resume. City manager, Roseville, from twelve to twenty-three, superintendent, St. Clair, from two thousand and six, two thousand and twelve, previously a city manager in Basser, township superintendent in Bath Township. He has specialized areas of transportation, land use planning, economic development, redevelopment, strategic planning, legislative policy analysis, project management, grant administration management, collaborative regional planning, administrative leadership, and it goes on, memberships, MML. It goes on and on in this resume. So with that, I can let Chief Heslop talk a little bit more about what he would be looking at as kind of, any kind of consulting or supportive role with this.
Yeah, you know, at first, when I got, when I got the phone call about this guy, my excitement level kinda went through the roof, because, you know, I'm not dedicated to the city offices a hundred percent of the time, like I should be, 'cause I'm running between both. So with, with a gentleman like this, who has got this, this type of a resume, I mean, kinda my excitement level kinda peaked a little bit, saying, it's always good to have good people surround you and defer some problems to, 'cause I'm learning this as, as we go. So I made some phone calls on this guy, and I, I didn't find one person say anything bad about him. His leadership skills, his style that he promotes, people love this guy. And if he's willing to come here, especially in lieu of what happened here a little while ago, somebody to defer and help in city offices when I can't be here, I think this would be a tremendous asset to the city. I think this is gonna be now a win-win situation.
I think he agreed also to discount his rate after we talked to him.
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna ask what that was.
Yeah, so...
To, to work here, and, and he's, he's not willing to spend more than thirty hours a week doing anything. I think he's down to, is it fifty?
Yeah, he's, so his discount rate, so he still lives in St. Clair, has been in St. Clair about twenty years. He's still kinda very active in the community and things going on. So his discounted rate for us would be fifty dollars an hour, and he would be looking to spend maybe twenty-four to thirty hours less, if not needed as much, but...
At Jim's discretion.
At, at Jim's discretion, projects, whatever he's working on, it would be what him and Jim talked about, what Jim would want him to do.
And legally, this would not be an employee. We would negotiate an independent contractor agreement for consulting services, and the, the document would, would spell out that he would be working at the direction of the interim city manager and being plugged in on any given day where the need was, on a consulting basis, not as an employee.
Would they be available, the four days a week that?
Yep.
City staff work?
Yep.
Okay, just a shortened day?
Right.
Okay, or whatever?
Whatever Jim needs.
Sure.
Bob, since this is a, a contract, do we need to go and negotiate, and does that contract have to come back here then for?
Well, well, recognizing that this would be a new issue, we, 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 we talked to the gentleman, he would like to come in and meet with Jim pronto. Those two come to terms on what the needs are and how Jim believes that this gentleman could help and assist in the office with the various departments, and then he would put together a pro forma on that and a presentation and bring it back to you. We're not asking for any vote on this tonight. We're asking for a little consensus to move forward. So he would come back and make a presentation to you, so that you're aware of what he would be providing, and then we would reduce that to an independent contractor's agreement. Independent contractor would mean, you know, he's responsible for his own taxes, he's responsible for all of his own stuff.
The pay is the pay.
The pay is the pay.
Take it and do what you will with it.
Right.
I think it's a great idea.
I guess I'm gonna ask Jim, I mean...
I'll get out of your way.
I, I guess I just wanna know, this, it sounds like you really wanna look through this and...
Or at least move it forward.
Move forward and at least talk to the guy?
Yes, I would, I would love for this to move forward.
All right.
And, and meet with this gentleman, and discuss options and go from there. Yes, definitely.
So when I sat down with Jim, what we were envisioning was some structure where, you know, Jim's the city manager, right? And then there, this guy could be right here, and then whatever the needs are of the various departments, Jim could dispatch, might be a whole, you know, the guy has a treasury background, so there might be a whole day he needs to spend helping the treasurer department, but there might be a whole day on clerk issues. So that would be, and Jim would, Jim would be able to recognize those needs and, and plug and play this, this expertise as necessary.
So the motion would be something along the lines of, you know, to proceed with investigation and discussion of the interim city manager?
Bring it back to the...
Mr. Atkins to, yeah, formulate a sort of plan and bring it back to the commission at a future meeting?
Yep, next meeting.
Okay.
And, and like I said, he, he reached out, he reached out to me. He's, he's well aware of everything that's been going on, he's been watching the meetings, he's very supportive of us and wants to assist us in any way that he can, with his expertise and knowledge.
When, when did he reach out?
So I first heard from him last, last week, and then...
Two days after the last meeting, I think you, no, 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 about a week after the last meeting.
Yeah.
So Mike, to answer your question, when she, she, when she heard about, when she heard from, she called me, and then I said, well, do more investigation. And then we had a, a document ready to send out to the commissioners, introducing the subject with a cover letter, and then Jim said, timeout on that, I wanna do my own investigation. And so we paused the whole program. Jim gave thumbs up yesterday morning, and today's today.
So he contacted you or her?
No, not me. No, I don't, I don't know the guy.
He contacted me directly, and then I contacted city attorney to find out where something that would be.
I mean, moving forward with this, if we do plan on signing this guy up, obviously that's gonna reduce the duties of Mr. Heslop over there.
I don't, I don't think so.
No?
No. No, not after tonight. There's, the, he's gonna be a huge, huge benefit now to the city offices.
The clerk this apartment needs some help over here, too, so.
Yeah, definitely.
So is there a time limit thing on this? Do we have to make it formal?
The, the, the services of this individual would end when you get your city manager.
But do you start using him earlier? I mean, we're probably not gonna get to vote on a contract till next meeting.
Well, he's gonna meet with him.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, can he start working with him sooner?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, do we need a motion on that?
Well, we've got one.
Can we do it, set it aside until you have more conversation?
We still do need the motion to at least approve Jim to talk to him and progress with some sort of plan.
You're right, though, and bring it back.
Right. No money will exchange hands, it's just talking, right? But what you're suggesting, Lisa, is that we may be provisioned for some interim approval?
So that he can start sooner than waiting two, another two weeks?
Right.
Is what I'm saying, yeah.
Because initially, he thought, as long as we had the support tonight of the board, then he could meet with Jim, and then they'd get something together. and then they'd get something together and then he thought he'd have time to do a presentation at the next meeting, but you want it to start sooner than that.
Well, all I'm saying is, if Jim can use him earlier than that, and it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be up to Jim basically.
You could make your motion two parts, you could, you could have the first part about bringing it back, but in the interim authorize fifteen hours of service if Jim needs it.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Isn't that fair?
Very good, yes.
But you're not approving the contract?
No.
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 Right, correct, it is not a contract approval, it's only interim help should Jim need it for some, yeah, fixed amount of hours.
Who made the motion?
I mean, I'm, I think it should be two separate though, right? Let's, let's make a motion to allow the talk.
First motion is a motion to allow me to talk to him.
Okay.
Who was, who, to set up a contract, I made it.
Ross, who seconded that? Remember?
Might have been Lisa.
I think I did.
Lisa.
Yeah, I think she did.
Okay.
How many motions?
It's an open conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's discussion, so.
Let's vote on that first.
Yeah, okay.
Roll call?
Do we need a roll call, can we just do a?
Just do a voice vote.
Okay, I'll approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Second motion would be yes, it's a, I mean, Jim, honestly speaking though, fifteen hours, what do you need? What do you think you need?
I have them for eighty.
It's an up to number.
We'll, we'll go up to, give me twenty, up to twenty.
Twenty hours, okay, I make a motion that we approve at the rate of fifty dollars per hour, twenty hours of Mr. Atkins' time to Jim if needed between this meeting and the following where we may be able to approve some sort of contract.
Yeah, I will make sure.
Oh, sorry.
Does anybody want a second?
Support. Go ahead.
Okay.
Who's?
Jake.
Uh, Jake.
Who supported, uh, Ross made a motion?
Correct.
Yes. Same voice vote? Well, it's expenditure money doing a roll.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, roll call, or should I start mayor again?
Uh, nope. Always call the mayor last.
Okay, all right, I'll go start with him again. Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rory?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vander Bosch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I called that ten dot E dot one. That's your, your turn by the way. Oh.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're moving on to new business. And item eleven A, proposed contract for scanning services from TK Inspections LLC. And can I have a motion to consider contracting with TK Inspections LLC for scanning services related to the billing department filed?
Hey, you made a motion and you need a motion? Because I want to make a motion to set it aside.
I need it, I need it to, I need it to discuss.
Till we get a city manager. Because there's no big hurry right now to get that stuff done. I work in big communities and they're, we're not doing that there. So, why, why, why all of a sudden do we need a, a contract with somebody else to do it in our facility?
But should I get a, a motion to discuss that first?
His motion's gonna supersede your motion.
I made a motion to set it aside.
Yeah, he's making, you're making a motion to postpone.
Right.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
So, now, all you can discuss is the motion to set it aside, no more discussion of the substance.
Okay, I need more discussion on that. Hey, roll call vote.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Commissioner Helfrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rory?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
No.
Commissioner Bryson?
No.
Mayor Vander Bosch?
No.
Motion carries.
All right.
Set aside. Motion to set aside. Let's talk about a later date, Tracy.
Okay.
Actually, until we have a city manager as well, so. Up to ninety days.
For eleven B, professional services agreement with Fleiss and Vanderbrink Engineering Incorporated. Can I have a motion to approve the professional services agreement between city and Fleiss and Vanderbrink Engineering Incorporated for drinking water state revolving fund project plan in assistance with funding options as drafted?
So, moved.
Support?
Okay, motion and support, and now for discussion.
Okay, what you're looking at is going after a large amount of money. Hopefully, we get this and we improve this to our water system, our mains and our water plants. The fee is twelve thousand five hundred to do the intent to application. If we use our ready-to-serv water fees to pay for this monies, won't come out of the water fund. General for nothing, and I believe this is up to seventy-five percent. Up to seventy-five percent loan or.
Go ahead.
You tell them.
Yeah, you want to finish it, I can.
Yeah, it's up to seventy-five percent matching graph. So, I, it's, it's a good deal. First time this offer this in a couple of years now and I think we could use it, we, you know, get some of our mains fixed. Generations, oh, it's been generations, sorry.
Can, can you elaborate, Mike, on all what, what this would encompass?
This would encompass the water plant, if you look on the first, on the page I handed out earlier.
Yep.
On the bottom, we have the upgrades replaced by other sized mains. Right, I'm just going by this. So, uh, it'll be the water distribution upgrades replaced other side mains throughout town. If we use all this money throughout the whole town.
Okay.
Um, to replace, upgrade water service lines, which we're in the main need to do over the next twenty-five years. And upgrade our water plant. We have some up, uh, things up there that Eagle's gonna make us do and we need to get that taken care of too.
On the water lines, is it lead and galvanized?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I've been getting questions on that.
Yes, lead and galvanized.
Lead and galvanized. And this would cover, this would cover a lot of the community?
All the community.
Yeah.
All the community.
This includes replacement of every lead and galvanized line in the community.
But I mean, even the water lines is what I'm talking, anything in the streets, all that would be done?
Yes, all the, all the mains that we have.
So, you get this done, you get the street done?
Yes.
And it's what, twenty-six million?
Twenty-eight million, I believe.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
And if we can't, if we can't get a loan for, let's say, the other twenty-five percent because it's too high, we can adjust that number down to what we can afford.
Okay, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna start all the paperwork to try to put in so that we can get this great?
Yes.
Okay.
And another nice thing about this, if we do get the loan or the grant, we get to pay back our, our money, which better them from the grant.
Okay.
So, the, the twelve-five can get paid out of the grant?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Great, good to see you again.
Take a few minutes.
Hey, Mike.
If I'm an expert on it, since this has not happened in a while, Chris Hennessy from Fleiss and Vanderbrink. So, what, how this came about, just briefly, if you haven't explained a lot of it. The federal government passed the ARA Act, the American, right? You're familiar with that during COVID? And then, they passed the Infrastructure and Transportation Act. So, under the last two presidents, they passed quite a bit of funding into infrastructure. What the state of Michigan did is you, regardless of where you're at today, you would fund improvements to your water and wastewater system through the state revolving fund. That's called the SRF. So, it's where municipalities borrow at a low interest rate, then they pay back into it in perpetuity. So, other municipalities, it's been around for decades, you borrow, I think the interest rate is right around two percent right now to, to do projects. And historically, you would borrow from that to do all of your work in a community and the state would offer what's called principal forgiveness. So, you would borrow, let's say, ten million dollars and you did certain types of work that would be considered, for example, energy efficiency improvements. The state then had the ability to forgive a portion of your principal. So, you would still have to borrow that and bond that, right, is how, is how you fund these infrastructure. But you had principal forgiveness. With the funds that were put in from the federal government, they're, they're offering grants. And they're offering up to seventy-five percent. So, based on, unfortunately, your median household income is above the cutoff, but based on your water bills, you qualify for what's considered overburdened status. They've completely reworked the SRF program this year. It was extremely difficult for smaller cities to access it the way that they had the point system before. When we ran through the point system, you score relatively high on the drinking water, not on the clean water. We didn't want to put in for clean water knowing that you weren't gonna score as high. So, how the SRF system works is, let's say you have a hundred applications, they may only have funds for forty applications. So, if you score high enough in there and you're funded, you then can do your project. Let's say that you score high enough and you're funded and the council decides not to do the project. Well, you can choose not to do it at that point and you just drop off the list and then everybody else below you is really happy because then they bump up in, into the project. So, while it's up to seventy-five percent this year, that's what they did the last round. They had a lot of applications this year because of the first time they've ever really offered grants in generations. So, what, they had so many applications, I don't know if they're gonna fund up to seventy-five percent. That's what you're eligible for in a grant based on being overburdened as a community. Go through a couple of things on here. Your, this is the, we put in what's called an ITA, that's an intent to apply back, November, it was due back in November first. And we took the information, if you look at that, most of the information is with your system inside the city, not at your treatment plant. And I know there's been historical discussion about potentially combining water systems. Almost eighty percent of the work is not related to your water treatment plant. It's stuff that you've got to fix anyways, your, your lead and your galvanized lines, as well as quite a few water mains. You've got a water main from nineteen fifty-one, for example, that, that needs to be replaced, it's, it's quite old. You've got a number that are four and six inch, which are bad for fire suppression. You simply can't get the pressure needed to run through your pumping trucks at lines that. So, this would make all of those lines eight inches, which is standard now in, in municipalities. So, if you look on this front page of the ITA, there's the breakdown at the bottom. You can see the distribution of the twenty-six million, only three point eight is related to your water treatment plant. So, hypothetically, let's say you didn't have a water treatment plant, your distribution system is something you still have to maintain. So, you would go through to the SRF program. So, you bond these over thirty or forty years. And the reason you would do that is your water system is, these improvements are going to be used by multiple generations. So, it makes sense to fund them over multiple generations. So, one generation today isn't necessarily paying for something that people would use thirty years down the road. So, if you know you have a water main that's over sixty years old, you know, they last quite a while, but obviously, they need improvement. So, we took the work out of your, the commission has already approved what's a capital improvement plan. So, we just simply took that work out of what was already approved, put it into the ITA and they now, what they require is a project plan. So, this is essentially how Eagle weeds out communities. So, everybody puts in because this, there's not a cost to put this in, there's work involved in it. But there, like I said, there isn't a cost, it's when you get to the project plan that a lot of communities back out because they simply don't want to spend any dollars and they want to get, you know, a large grant. So, if you're looking at potentially for twenty-six million up to seventy-five, let's say hypothetically, it's even fifty percent of it, the project plan is, what was in our proposal, twelve thousand five hundred, that's good for multiple years. So, let's say you didn't get funded this year or you decided that it wasn't a good year to, to bond out the rest of it, you'd be able to use the project plan in multiple years for work that you've got to do improvements anyways. So, I'm happy to answer some questions about the process or I brought with me some more detail. I know Mike can go through a little bit more of what came out of the capital improvement plan. This is just some scoring sheets that we did, yeah. So, on the, I'm assuming everybody had this in their packet and it included this along with it, just a breakdown of the work. And then, uh, there was a, what the, what, what's contained in your project plan that submitted to Eagle. Was that included in there?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm hap, definitely happy to answer any questions. So, Fleiss and Vanderbrink has operated their water and wastewater plants for a, a number of years. Yep, you had a question?
I looked online and they were telling all the different amounts that cities were asking, like Detroit wanted forty million and. It just seemed high for our size town, so is it because they've done things already or, or it's not as bad? Though I can't imagine Detroit is any very good. But what, why is this twenty-six million when a lot of the other places and cities that are similar in size to us were a lot less?
Well, I can answer that. If you have any privilege to the information I gave the previous commission, we have over sixty-two percent of our water mains that were installed nineteen thirty-nine and nineteen forty-nine. Four inch mains and two inch mains that we need to replace and that's majority of the cost right there. We still have two hundred and eighty homes to survey yet, figure out what type of service they have, replace those. We have seventy-five in the book right now for replacement over the next two years. That's why this cost is so high. You have the water plant improvements also. You have some mandates gonna be coming at you from Eagle that they want required done, we have to do it.
Okay, I just wondered what the differences were, you know, sometimes cities have done stuff on their own and then put in.
Right, we tried to do it on our own, but the average street runs about five hundred thousand dollars.
And the city has, you know, is actively, we've gone and we continue, we go through the CIP from my colleagues that are at the plant and the city does work to make these improvements. The issue is it's never, you're never gonna get ahead unless you do a large project like they did fifty, sixty years ago to set up your water system that you all are using now, that they took on debt that long ago, your grandparents probably did, to build the water system you're using. So, you just have to naturally do that. It's not something that you want to do every year, like this is, you wouldn't ever encounter this type of a figure, you know, year after year. This is to fix a whole host of things in one set at a very low interest rate through the SRF that we know we have the ability to potentially get grants for this time, that we're not accessible before they turn down the faucet in DC.
Okay, and, and the other thing is, how, how long do you anticipate this project to take if we did get the grant?
We can do it in multi-years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the project plan that we do has to be submitted by May to the state.
Okay.
And then, they make a decision on awarding in the fall. The following year, you'll start doing the design and that and then, construction would be twenty, twenty-five would start. But the volume of work, it's gonna go over multiple years.
And right now, I am trying to put together a critical list of water mains that need to be done, I would think would be for, you know, be done first.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to get all this set in place, so if somebody has it, they can run with it.
Are you prioritizing, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, you go and do like a section at a time for the ones that are not priority or?
Well, the, the, we'll probably do like we're doing now. The mains we installed now, we took, went on streets that were low, small mains with no fire protection. So, the streets we did already, we would put bigger mains in, more hydrants and there's areas in town that doesn't have very good fire protection. So, we'd probably do one or two of those streets right away.
Right.
Just so they have a fire hydrant to hit to help with the fire.
So, this would be if you are, you know, score enough points. So, we went through with Mike a couple of weeks ago, kind of a, what Eagle put out as a, a new point system and you score really high on your drinking water side and that's why we dropped the clean water because you just didn't score high enough and we didn't think you were gonna make it.
and we didn't think you were going to make it on point wise this year. So we didn't want to submit knowing that it'd be a futile effort. So we just stuck to the drinking water. You recently got what's like a Nasi Graham from Eagle related to your water plan. And these are the improvements. We took that letter from them and like, all right, you want to make, you're demanding these improvements. Well, we'll just include them in our SRF, which is a very small portion of. So the, the plants themselves are not in.
Plants, no.
It's your distribution system. They just, you know, you do what you can based on your rates. So whatever you don't, you know, whatever portion would not be funded by a grant, you know, you bond that out and then you spread it over thirty years for customers. So it's a much lower rate to fix the system.
Well, Mike, if Eagle requires you, you run across the line to change it, right?
No.
No.
No, you have, that's what the inventory is. When you check, when you do the inventory and you find them, you have twenty-five years to replace that line. You don't have, we don't have to replace right away. Only time we have to replace it, if we disturb it, break it, or if there's a leak on it.
That's what I'm saying, if you have a water break and it's a lead line, you have to replace it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So one way or the other, you're going to have to replace them.
Yes.
Because Eagle requires it.
Yes, that's mandatory.
On the principal forgiveness, could you elaborate a little bit more on that or?
Yeah, you got a specific, I'm happy.
I mean, principles, the, that's the crux of the mortgage, it's not the interest, right? So, you know, they're effectively forgiving whatever the twenty-five percent is that we would need to borrow.
Under the traditional program.
In a traditional program, okay, I'm sorry, got it.
That's why.
That's why this is so much more beneficial.
That doesn't apply to the grant program.
Got it, sorry.
We thought in conversations over a number of weeks that, so basically to score enough points to be competitive, let's say you're just going to do a distribution line. You're not going to score enough points under their system to get funded. So we want it to score the points because we know that, well, it's a, like I said, a futile effort if you're not going to get ranked high enough. So why not do the work, make yourself eligible for the grant this year? I have no idea what the state's going to do. They have a lot more requests for the funding. But I also know they've got a lot more money at the state to still budget. And it would seem like a reasonable thing to put into this fund again. So I'm, I'd like to hope that they would put more into it. We just know it's a, literally a once in a lifetime. They've never done these type of grants before through the SRF program.
So if, if we approve this tonight, then what's the next step that you would do?
We would sit down with Mike and we'd put together a project plan, which is gonna, if you look in the back of that, there are details, it's an outline of everything that's in there. Various alternatives. So Eagle requires that, you know, if X doesn't happen, what are you going to do? So we have to put all alternatives, like if the water main can't go back under that rope, we may have to move it to the other side. We'll identify all those types of alternatives. That's submitted to Eagle. Then they take that project plan and that's what they score against other communities. So it's a competitive process.
And then it says you have to have a public hearing and all this other stuff?
Yep.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's just an, I mean, you, you guys deal with that on a regular basis. When you change, it'd be similar if you're changing ordinance. You got to have a public hearing for, because you're bonding, right? Potentially borrowing money.
And we're asking for twenty-eight million and we only might get fifty percent. Then do, do we have to borrow the rest of that money? Or can we just accept the fifty percent?
We can accept whatever we want. We can come down to wherever we need.
Scale it.
Okay.
We just ask for the moon.
Want to know options, yeah.
You ask for the moon and you come down to what you can afford.
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't be able to just accept their grant, so.
That's what I'm asking.
Take the free, no, no.
That's what I'm asking.
You can lower the top number.
Yeah, the whole.
To make your contribution less.
So they say we could get the grant and then we say, well, we don't have fourteen million dollars.
So move the big number down.
So we could take seven million or something and put in seven million.
Yeah, our, our intent, we want to, and we would work that, is to not affect the scoring on it, right? So if they come back and you score really high and you get it and then you say, well, we're not going to do, you know, these type of things that got us all the points, then you're not going to stay eligible for it.
Right. I just want to know the options.
We commit to it, we're kind of committed to it, or we're going to lose our points.
Right. And the worse we are, the more points we get. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Wouldn't that be something, if you, if you ran your system horribly and had what are ACOs from Eagle and all these letters, you would score more points. Fortunately, that doesn't happen because you've got operators on staff and all of that.
Well, we don't have any pending administrative consent orders, right? We don't.
No.
No, we would have got points for those.
A lot of communities do.
It would have been nice, I mean, I hate to, you know.
I know, I know exactly what you're saying. But we have been consent order free. Thank you, Mike. And I know you were here when the plant was built.
Oh, thank you.
So we, we, we are free of consent orders. You know, we get our normal Nasi Gams. You and I walk through the Nasi Gams that we get our inspection reports. We try to do what we can do and you guys have done a great job running the facility for us.
That's, that's part of this too. We just, you know, they're requiring us to do some work at the water plant that I'm, I'm fighting with right now because it's, we'll get into detail, but.
It's significant.
Yeah.
I know.
Some things that we have to do.
Right. Some that are subjective.
Oh, yeah.
And you have a state, we, we're existing in a state right now that has a background, a relatively fresh background with respect to the water supply in Flint. And there's a great emphasis on water quality and it's a great time to get money.
Yes.
Do you, uh, do you have like a link that we can go to to just look into this further? I, I look on the state website and I just, I can't even find anything that even mentions the grant.
Yeah, I mean, if you just Google Eagle, E-G-L-E-S-R-F, the, the top, it'll take you right to their state revolving fund page and.
And this is the drinking water state revolving fund that we're, that we're going for.
If you, yep. You go right to their page and they, it's a really user-friendly site. They've completely changed the entire system this year. Like I said before, it was, large communities were gobbling the funds up the way the point system was.
Yeah.
And smaller cities couldn't access them. And there were a lot of complaints about it. It's been that way for twenty-plus years. But if you go to that website, it's very user-friendly. I'll give you my card.
Yeah, it's, do you know where it lists on there where it talks about grants?
Yeah, it's in the, they have, right on the main page, if you click on the overburdened, there's a tab that says overburdened, significant overburdened, that shows you, you know, what the formulas are to get them. We've calculated them and we know.
Okay.
You are overburdened based on your bills.
Yeah, I was looking into that too, the one percent.
One percent.
Yeah.
Your bills are one percent or greater of your median household income, you qualify for overburdened status.
Now, would we qualify for disadvantaged as well?
It's called significantly overburdened now, but.
No, I'm saying that the loan, like the, the reduced interest rate on the loan. You, you circle, you, unknown, says disadvantaged community as determined by Eagle, you, you put unknown.
When we filled that out, they were still working on the program guidelines. We now know that you're overburdened.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking overburdened, I'm talking disadvantaged, two different things.
Yeah, they changed the language to overburdened.
It's still, I'm, I'm, if you look at the loan rates, the loan rates are actually lower and it says disadvantaged though.
No, I understand what you said, they just changed the word from disadvantaged.
It's still on the website today.
They, they changed it, Mike, they didn't like the connotation of.
It's negative, so they may, they may have just left that there.
Okay, so that's, we do, after the lower loan rate.
Yeah, they didn't like, they didn't like the sound of.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, we were talking about the same thing. It's just one had a negative.
Yeah, it's just if they would.
Be overburdened instead of disadvantaged.
Keep their websites current and degree.
Yeah, they haven't updated it.
Yeah. So how much money did the, the state get from the feds for this program?
Between this program, between clean water and drinking water, they put in a little over five hundred million.
Five hundred million?
Correct.
That's it? I mean, I'm just looking at the, at the, the website here and they got two hundred and eighty intent to apply totaling one point nine billion, just so people are aware how many.
Total funds available were around one, one point two. That's the total, but the money that came in from the federal government was a little over five hundred million.
Okay, then, yeah, that helps.
So they do have more requests because of, this has never happened before. They've never had this much money come in and they, to make eligibility, you know, eligibility for grants.
Yeah.
And it's usually the principle of forgiveness.
And then, uh, what, uh, how many years is this going to be go, is this the only year? Or is it going to be two, three years?
Right now it's only a year.
So one year, either you're in or you're out.
Yeah, from the, because it's federal money. So I have no idea, I, I don't know what they're going to do in Lansing related to budgeting this year and if they put more funds in this program. Because of the number of requests, we know that, you know, Michigan's, I mean, the end of the day, we developed as a state, you know, around the auto industry forty, fifty years ago. So it's a lot of what our infrastructure is.
Right.
But I don't, I don't know what they're going to do. I just know what's in there right now and why we thought it was a good idea for the city to try and take advantage of it. You can see so many other communities are trying the same.
Now, you said if we didn't get it, then you would still work for us? Can you expand on that?
Yeah, I mean, we've worked for the city for years.
Well, just in this contract, a twelve hu- twelve thousand five hundred dollar contract. You said even if we don't get it, you would still do.
I think if we don't get it, our documents will remain valid for several cycles. He, we wouldn't have to redo them.
Like if you didn't get it this year and you went back next year and replied your project plan, you wouldn't have to go through this process again.
Oh, I thought you just said it was just one year though.
For the grant. Yeah, so, yes.
So for this, so in other programs?
So the SRF program.
Okay, okay.
Been around for decades. It works in perpetuity. That's how a local government, all over the state, all over the country, they borrow from it at a low interest rate, pay back into it so other communities can borrow from it.
Have we participated in that since it's been around for decades?
When's the last time they did one?
We just paid one off, uh.
We just retired one.
We just, yeah.
Year ago.
Water tower?
But it was, how long ago did they borrow the money? It was twenty or thirty years.
That was a twenty year.
Yeah, so it was, so the last time you would have done it was twenty years ago.
And then we had the sewer plant also, which was in ninety-eight and that's paid off too.
Twenty plus years since you've done.
Okay. And then you, you said that a lot of people back out from the first kind of application process to the second phase?
They are.
What's that?
Some communities are, yeah.
So, I mean, some, okay. Is there, I mean, is there, ah, you probably don't have the information, I was going to ask you what percent? I'm just trying to get an idea, how, how actual, what reality is this that we're going to get this?
Mike, it, when you, when you do the first half, it's free, you know, it's like a, you just filed it last November, right?
Yeah, we.
People back out at this stage.
Yep.
When it's twelve thousand five hundred to keep going, this is when a lot of communities say, let's wait till next time.
Right.
If I may, Chair of our Planning Commission?
Yeah, Mike, obviously some of this, if not all of this, is going to disrupt the roads.
Yeah.
Which is going to give us an opportunity to repave those roads.
Yes.
Yeah, this covers repaving.
This covers repaving the roads too.
Guys.
Yeah.
It is, it is. Absolutely, it's a win.
This, this will cover everything in the road except for, you know, if we have some sanitary work or something in that road, before we pave it, we're going to tap into our, our funds and maybe get that sanitary fixed or that storm fixed.
Just to clarify, of course, it's a, it's a great thing and I absolutely would not be opposed to it. I just want to know the reality of the situation. You know, I know we had discussed some USDA loans, getting the city manager to explore those for the, for the roads. So I just don't want to just cast everything aside and assume we're going to just do this, you know? Because we don't know, we don't know if we're going to get it.
Right, but USDA loan, you know, you're going to borrow four million dollars and pay that, pay that back for the next twenty years, thirty years and you're only going to get a block or a section done in town.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the, what they offer, what the terms of the USDA loans are. I just know that was.
I mean, I, I work with, through some of the USDA programs, it's a higher interest rate.
Yeah.
There's no grant available and they're based on your median household income. So you're eligible for a hundred percent loan through rule development based on your community size, but your income precludes you from getting any grants from them.
Okay. Now, asking for a twenty-six million, i- is that like, that's not going to hinder our, our ability to get approved for something like this, being it so, so high, is it?
No, they could come back and say, okay, you're scoring, we're going to give you ten million instead of your twenty-six.
Okay, so is this like an ask high? I mean, it just, just compared to other communities, like we're asking really high, really high.
You're asking for the moon.
Okay.
And you come back down to what reality is.
We knew based on the way they were scoring that, so it's, you're essentially trying to check off boxes. Like I said, if you were just going to do a water main, you weren't going to score enough points. And you could go through this process and still put in an SRF. But I know that you wouldn't score enough points to, to get into the.
Yeah, I apologize for all the questions. It's just, this is the first we're getting this, so it's like if I got it beforehand, I would have reached out independently.
In a former life, I sat on your side.
Yeah, okay.
Years ago, I want to say that voluntarily, didn't run again.
Yeah.
Mention that, so. But, um, no, those are, those are good questions. So it is, they allow you to do it to forty years, isn't it?
You can go up to forty years.
Up to forty years, you can spread the cost out over bills. So you're, you know, obviously you pay more in interest, but you're, you pay more in interest, but your, whatever's going on the bills would be smaller. And those are policy decisions that you would make with whoever you work with to do the bonding.
Trying to find.
On that part of it, so.
At what point will you know like what the grant match will be? That's totally at the end? We won't know if it's sunny five fifty or twenty-five or even ten or who knows?
We'll know until they award it to us.
Yeah.
You know, until we get the.
In that process.
Yeah, we've been.
What would the next milestone be?
Submit your project plans.
Were we to approve this tonight?
We'll come back. Yep, we'll give you your project plan that's going to be due in May to Eagle. And then we'll come back at that time. We're going to, obviously we'll be back in the city working through that. But then we'll probably know toward the end of the summer, early fall, what their scoring is.
If they don't change it again.
Yeah, I don't, hopefully not because it, I mean, it was a big workaround that they, they really changed the program to make smaller communities more eligible for it to score points, so. In May and then fall, you'll know about funding. And then that's when you would start thinking about, you know, how you would ultimately make the policy decision, right? You know, on your bills, you pay for it, how long you're going to do it, that type of stuff. I, I just echo that, you know, when you make these big improvements like this, you as a city have used your, your enterprise funds, your utilities to do improvements regularly. You're, and I don't have it on me, but you have a capital improvement plan that Mike's been checking off as they replace. So you're steadily going through it, you're just not able to get ahead unless you do a whole bunch at one time, so.
Excellent.
Good presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike, thanks for helping me.
Yeah, okay. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah.
Is that mine or yours?
You can have it.
Nope, I got mine. I'm good.
All right, so we have a motion and a support. We've had, is there anything additional on discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Roll call.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Hilfrink.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Roig.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yep.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We're on to twelve A and items removed from consent agenda. And first we have Mike Ettrich's retirement letter.
So just felt it would be nice for people to help honor Mike and honor his years of service and everything else that I read his retirement letter and then also the resignation letter of our city clerk. So Mike says, this was sent December seventh, so this was when Holly Tatman was still our city manager. Holly, after many years of employment with Marine City Department of Public Works, I've decided to retire. It's been my pleasure to serve the community for so long. I would like to thank the people of Marine City for their support. I'd also like to thank the city commissioners, city managers, coworkers, and employees from years ago to present for their support. I will truly miss serving this great city and working with each and every one of you. I've seen the city at its worst and its best. I've seen the city at its worst and its best. The progress that's been made in the last seven years has been amazing. I would like to believe that it came from teamwork between the commission, city manager, department heads, and staff, who all worked together to make this city what it is today. So much can be achieved when everyone works together and supports each other. There is still a lot to do, and I hope that you all will continue to work together to keep our town moving forward and to serve this city with the pride like we do now. Again, thank you. It's been my honor to serve the people of Marine City. I am looking at May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as my official date to retire. Respectfully, Michael Ittrich. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, thank you.
Again, thank you. So the next one is the resignation letter from Shannon, addressed to the interim city manager. And this was dated, uh, the fourteenth of February, so two days ago. It is with bittersweet emotion that I tender this letter to the city of Marine City, declaring my resignation from the position of city clerk. For my contractual relationship with the city, I am required to provide thirty days of notice, therefore, my last working day will be March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I will utilize available sick vacation and floating holiday time for an actual last day of April sixth, twenty twenty-three, and will forfeit any remaining flex sick vacation or floating holiday time available to me after that time. I came to the city of Marine City with the hope that I was accepting a career position where I could spend the next twenty or so working years of my life. I was excited to begin this new chapter in my life and thrilled to be entering into municipal government where I could bring the best of my experience and education in service to residents. As a casual visitor to the, to the city for evenings out with my husband, I'd always enjoyed the drive town M twenty-nine along the river, absorbing the beautiful scenery as I would come into town, and seeing the sunrise over Canada quickly became one of my favorite parts of the commute to work in Marine City. Upon beginning my career, I found an administrative office environment that was inviting, warm, and friendly. Everyone seemed to enjoy coming to work, and together, Holly, Michelle, Anne-Marie, and I, fell into a routine of beginning our mornings with smiles and amiable chatter about the work ahead for the day. DPW superintendent Mike Ittrich would swing by to join our chat with his coffee in hand as we talked shop. It was a happy atmosphere where we would greet residents with a kind word, a smile, and casual conversation as they came in to conduct their business with the city. It was a place where, as a team, we would put our heads together to brainstorm problems and create solution to a myriad of issues. We would plan the month's work with the goal of talking to residents, or, uh, taking the results, rather, of our dedicated work to the commission with hopes of seeing our labor come to fruition as the big projects, as the projects, big, small, and even routine would be approved. We were excited about our projects and ideas and faced our days with the ever-present positive thought of how can we make this community better for those who live and work here, and what more can we do? Now, having just passed my one-year anniversary employed by the city, the community I enjoyed has become a thirty-minute burden I detest. Mike Ittrich no longer swings by for a chat with his morning coffee. Amiable conversation has been replaced with tension and silence. Smiles on faces are thin, poor disguises for the disappointment, despair, sadness, and even anger that festers just below the surface in nearly all the administrative staff. What had been a cohesive office for problem solvers, thinkers, creators, and happy employees excited about putting in extra minutes and hours to better serve the community has been replaced with people who feel like they are expendable, replaceable, entirely devalued, or who drag themselves through the door daily as they desperately search for another opportunity that will remove them from the space that has been infused with abject hopelessness since November eighth, twenty twenty-two. The clear message causing these feelings in the administrative staff of having been dehumanized and denigrated was sent by the majority of the city commission at the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meetings. The action taken at these two meetings and the resounding message that was sent by most of the commission was loudly received by the administrative staff. That message was that we were to be silent and accept our marching orders like nameless, faceless, meaningless drones. If we didn't like it, we were invited to go to work somewhere else. And of course, if we didn't like that invitation, we could wait around until we were eventually fired. The example of that outcome was laid before us with what happened to the city manager, Holly Tatman, after giving her all to help rectify the mess she had inherited when she came to the city approximately eighteen months prior to her tragic termination. I've been active in the workforce since I was fourteen years old, and I can honestly say I've never before experienced a workplace that had such a pervasive toxicity towards the staff that spends their time doing the actual work. I've never experienced a workplace environment where the decision of a department head was, in a very public way, attacked, questioned, and required an attorney's opinion to prove that they did their job as defined by the law and written by the employee procedures manual. And I've never before worked in a workplace where I felt belittled, devalued, and dehumanized as I have at the hands of this commission. Therefore, it is with no regret that I've decided to accept an invitation issued by one of the commissioners to go work somewhere else. And I think it speaks volumes to tell you that I am happily accepting the invitation, even though I am also accepting a slight reduction in pay to do so, because there is no price that can be put on being treated with basic dignity and respect. It is my sincere hope that the residents of the city observe what has transpired over these last few months, and also that the commissioners reevaluate their messages, intentional or otherwise, that they are sending to the employees and public at large of how they treat people who come to work for Marine City. I leave you with an invitation of my own, again Shannon speaking. One of your commissioners pointed out their history in having worked for the government stated how they, meaning the government, don't care. Perhaps it's time that you start to care, and I invite you to rise to the challenge to be different in the future. Sincerely, Shannon M. Adams.
I'd like to, again, thank Shannon for all of her service, that she's provided the city for all of her support, and wish her nothing but the best in her future endeavors.
Commissioners, you still have to.
We need to make a motion to receive and file the.
Those two items, yes.
Those items, so moved to receive and file the.
Support.
Resignation letter of Mike Ittrich and, uh, a retirement le- letter of Mike Ittrich and a resignation letter of Shannon Adams.
Support. Bill supported.
Clausen.
Okay, you got motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thirteen city managers report.
Uh, started, um, the budget process. Cole and I have met, and we'll send out budget worksheets to all the department heads. Mike, I know, had sent his in. Clark sent hers in. I started the, the police department one is done, city manager one is getting there. There's so many other minor little agendas in there that gotta get done. So started that project, um, been continually meeting with the P O M on union negotiations, so eventually we'll have a closed session to discuss, you know, that, that, um, contract. I met with the Teamsters on Wednesday, um, for a second round of negotiations with them. We tentatively agreed upon several items. One item that I really couldn't agree upon yet was, uh, the wage, because they had no, um, imperables to provide me at that point. Planning Commission on Monday, where was discussed for a master plan, two presentations were given from McKenna and Wade Trim. The planning commission has taken upon them, they're gonna call some references to further evaluate which one they wanna go with, and then ultimately, they'll put together a presentation to present to the commission for final determination of master plan and funding, et cetera, for that. Something, I know minor pieces have been done since I've been here twenty-three years, but this is a complete master plan overhaul, and, I mean, it needs to be done. So they'll, they're gonna pick their, their winner and then present it to you in a future date. Accepted the resignation of, of the city clerk. Brings me to, I had to find an interim city clerk. Quickly, um, I spoke to my office manager at the police department, Jason Bell, um, spoke with him. I first offered it to the current deputy clerk. Um, she politely declined the position, so I moved on to Jason. Jason accepted it. I'm drafting a contract for him. He was supposed to start training Monday, but obviously, we're gonna have to renegotiate those plans and figure something out from here, so, um, that is now on my radar. The, this is where the new guy can come in and significantly help me, so back to thanking you for that. Um, a day and a half was spent dealing with a bomb threat at the high school in my chief duties, which, um, turned out successful because nobody was injured. We've done our investigation. We found out who did it. Charges were sent to, um, our prosecutor. I planned on, planned on putting out a press release, and then on Monday, but in my spare time, I just couldn't find it, so, um, I'll just, I'll say it now, but I'll still put out a press release. Our culprit was actually from the state of Washington. So we're submitting our local charges. We've also shipped it to the FBI for them to look it over and, um, possible federal charges, so. We, we caught him. Um, we've met with, um, Nicole and I have met, um, on the recommendation from the mayor, Molly from the county. Um, county treasury department is coming down to meet with Nicole and start doing some tax disbursement stuff. Am I correct for that?
I think she thinks well.
Yeah, so she, she's meeting with Nicole and helping Nicole out in the treasury department on that aspect of it, so. To add to that, I reached out to Mary Ellen McDonald today, um, and she will start again on Monday, as a part-time employee of the city to also help out the treasury department. With the list that Curtis had provided us and saying that we're six months behind schedule even with help, um, she will be starting Monday, provide us to about ten hours a week, up to twenty if needed. But she's being a grandma and babysitting her, her grandbabies, and she's willing to step up and, and help the city again, so, um, she's coming in. Through some talks with, with Mike and the, the city attorney, finally, we're able to hammer down a, um, a location for the town hall, which will be here. I'm not so sure if this is gonna be enough room, but it's always had at the time. I do wanna thank Pastor Joe, because Pastor Joe from the Harvest Church initially quoted me a price that I wasn't willing to pay for this, and then after we said and posted that this would be our place, he called me back and said he would do the Harvest Church free of charge. So I do wanna thank him for that, but it was just too late. We had already posted use of this place. But thank you, Pastor Joe, at the Harvest Church for that offer. Um, I attended a chief's meeting, um, the vice president of the, um, St. Clark County Criminal Justice Association. That meets the second Wednesday of every month, so I attended that. We reviewed the emergency operation plans with all the rest of the South End chiefs and the fire chiefs at a breakfast last Thursday, um, for the East China School District, so we reviewed that, and then the budget. And I'm sure I missed fifteen things, but that's about the highlights.
If, uh, Mr. Atkins steps in and is the expert that he's, his resume touts in being on budget stuff, would Mary Ellen potentially be not need to come in quite as much? I'm not saying this for any other reason, that, you know, I know she really wants to be a grandma.
Right, but she was, she was willing to step up, and I'll take both the help. I don't wanna.
Sure, yeah, yeah, valid.
I mean, that will free up some time where Mary Ellen can sit with Nicole, and if, if they need help, then maybe they can defer to him, but now with the clerk's position, we're gonna need him to help with that, that area as well.
Okay, and then we'll just put that in the budget, then?
Yes.
From a approval of contract-type perspective? I just wanna make sure we're square there, that's all.
Yup.
Yeah.
Yup, we'll make it square.
Okay, cool. Thanks. And I just wanted to say, I had to pick my kid up from school, or, actually, this is sort of sad way to see the Innovation Center, but, uh, um, which they all said was actually very, very cool. But you guys did a phenomenal job. I mean, I applaud you so much. Everything was organized. There were people walking around asking if we had any questions, you know, what, how could they be of help? And, uh, yeah, so, again, all the praise in the world for how that was handled. I mean, you know, there was, I don't know that there's a plan for it. I don't know that you guys have like an emergency type of thing that, if this happens, we shall do X, Y, and Z.
There, there is on our end, and we actually attended, um, a debriefing today up at the Innovation Center with school staff, trihospital EMS, the fire departments, state police, everybody that was there attended this debriefing, and we talk about what did we do right, what did we do wrong, what can we do differently? And we, we call it failing forwards. What were our failures and how can we improve on them in the future?
Sure.
And it was a, it was an hour and a half, two-hour meeting today, and it was, it was beneficial to all parties.
Yeah, again, all the praise in the world. I, you know, I had full faith. Everything was handled very well. You know, all of the students were signed out individually, initials next to every name. I mean, it was very, very well done.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Meta Mayor.
All right, I'll move on to commissioner privilege and liaison reports. Commissioner Clausen?
As, as you heard already, the planning commission is working on the master plan, and they interviewed, um, we had an interview with three, one dropped out. We had the other two, and we discussed them. And, uh, we're still talking about it, but it kind of reminded the, the commission that, uh, we're gonna look for something to give you guys some, something to look at. And that, that we're a recommending body to. We can't make the decision, we can only give it to you, so. Otherwise, everything else is, uh, going good, and hopefully, it's not raining outside in Sleet. Safe drive home.
All right, Commissioner Bryson?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Hilfrink?
Um, all right, uh, regarding the comment at the podium tonight, uh, I'm gonna make one comment about this. Um, I have nothing to hide. I did absolutely nothing wrong. Um, I was unlawfully arrested. The prosecutor completely denied the charges because all it was, was a discipline issue for my child. Anyone who knows me personally knows the amazing dad that I am. And I'm really not gonna sit here and defend that, because like I said, people that know me know me and know the time that I put in with my kid. And because a child is involved in this, I'm gonna ask the, the public, please respect the privacy of that child. This is an issue that is between me and my daughter's mother, and, uh, it will be handled privately. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross?
I successfully attended and completed Advanced Elected Officials Academy this past, uh, weekend. It was a Friday, Saturday morning course. Thank you to the city for, uh, offering us money to go out and get training. It was very good. I've already, uh, been reimbursed, so thank you. It covered budgets, it covered audits, and a host of other things. Actually, one interesting thing that they covered was, the water and sewer fund, and how really that is supposed to be your fund to, you know, replace water and sewer pipes over a certain amount of time, and that, you know, you really need to be cognizant of your rates. So all I can say is this opportunity we hopefully will be getting is a really good one. A lot of communities are just like us and very behind in their water and sewer. In relation to the audit training and budget training, um, I do have some suggestions that we could go through, uh, when we go through the budget, but one of the more poignant things that I went over is I asked, you know, regarding our audit, how, you know, this is what happened, this is the way everything went, and, uh, you know, some trouble was brought up about it, and when I'd said that, the chat immediately started blowing up with the instructors saying, it's just welcome to politics, you know, it's okay. It's, your budget seemed fine. So, again, the auditor said everything's good. I would agree, and I respect their opinion. So, uh, if anybody hasn't taken any of the elected officials academies, I strongly, strongly recommend them. There's a core weekender that was virtual. Uh, it had already happened, but there's also is forthcoming in June, I believe, another core and advanced weekender, so if you haven't taken it, this one's in person, but still available. Highly, highly recommended. Uh, I covered my liaison reports, I believe, last meeting, and there have been no further meetings, so. As Commissioner Clausen mentioned, yeah, I got a thing on my phone that said snow mageddon or winter storm, uh, warning, so everybody, please, please be careful. And again, reach out to us with anything you need, anything. If you're working hard and feel like you can't make it in this town, we wanna hear from you. If you're having success and feel that, you know, in some way, we could still do a better job, we wanna hear from you. So please, 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 reach out to us. Our emails are all online. My phone number, I believe, should be back online. Please call us. We are here to serve you. Thanks.
Commissioner Ward?
Um, I'd just like to say about, um, Monday's town hall, I hope everybody will be civil, for one thing, and that we'll speak of facts and practical ideas, um, instead of a lot of emotional talk. We need to do something, so we need practical, good ideas to go. talk, we need to do something, so we need practical, good ideas to go forward, and that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Hunter?
I guess I don't have anything tonight. I'll skip.
Few things I had, I wanted to thank all the applicants for the city manager hiring committee, and again, I was especially encouraged to see names that we haven't seen on boards before, and I hope that more people would want to start getting involved as well, I'd like to thank Tricia May for her statement up at the podium, it was very, very powerful statement, and thank you for that, I want to thank Shannon for all the work that she has given our city, time she's been here, a thank you to Scotty Atkins for stepping up and offered to assist us, coming to us in our transitional time, and then I'll end with, positive note, I did get to officiate my first wedding this week, and I wanted to give a congratulations to Lauren and James on their wedding. Okay, and with that, we'll move for closed session, can I get a motion to enter into closed session?
Make a motion to move into closed session for both A and B?
No.
Or just B?
We moved A.
Just B.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
Support.
I scratched that out on a different one, yes, just for B.
Bill.
Bill.
Bill did.
We need a roll call.
Roll call vote.
We need a roll call on this.
And with a, does any-
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yep.
Commissioner Hilfrink?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Roig?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now you can take a little break.
You can, you can leave, I'll take a minute.